Good evening, everybody. Today is June 7th and it's the monthly planning board meeting. Could everyone stand up and we'll see the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The first item on the agenda is a special permit application with site plan approval, public hearing continued. And do you have to read it?
Yes.
Okay, can you go ahead and read that?
Town of Millis Office of the Planning Board notice a public hearing in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 40A, Section 11, Mass. General Law. The planning board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May, excuse me, Tuesday, June 7th at 7:30 PM in the Veterans Memorial Building, Room 229, 900 Main Street, Millis, on the application of Tony Verzuza Adverse of Wellness, Inc., 1375 Main Street, Suite B, requesting a special permit for and with site plan approval of the zoning bylaw of the Town of Millis for proposed manufacturing marijuana establishment and a portion of an existing industrial building located at 1375 Main Street, Suite B, Millis, Massachusetts. Assessors Map 21, Parcel 5. Owner, L&amp;L Realty Holdings. A copy of this application and site plan is on file in the office of the town clerk and can be viewed at the town's website. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated. Richard Nichols, Chair.
This, this application is going to be continued without discussion because there was a issue that they had to deal with regarding the building department. So, we're gonna postpone that till next meeting at what time?
July 17th at 7:30 PM.
July 17th at 7:30 PM.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion that we continue this public hearing without discussion until July 19th.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great, thanks. All right. And the next item on the agenda, which we are probably pretty close to 7:35.
It is not a public hearing.
Oh, okay.
I do not see Mr. Driscoll in the audience, but he does have a letter and application over there, so I think we'll slightly proceed to stop it.
All right. So, we will. This is an approval not required for Causeway Street, Grove Street. They are splitting up a piece of property. And, let's see here. Just have the address on it. Okay, so, I will read that. Carlo Molinari is looking to, from Sixth Causeway Street, is looking to divide one piece of land. And, so they have the first lot, which is 4.4 acres. And they want to split off another piece of property. And that one would be 22, 25.77 acres. Is this Mr. Driscoll?
Yes, sir.
Oh, you're on.
Okay, great.
Good, thanks. If you could, here, do you have a seat? Take a minute?
Sure.
We started, you're on time. I was overly, I'm overly exuberant, so I started to get going ahead of time. So, I started, gave a little bit of, I read some of the beginning, so Carlo Molinari is splitting up one lot into two lots?
Correct.
If you could just run through what that entails.
Yes, he's, he wants to divide the property he has into two lots. One lot would be for the existing home and the other would be a, about a 25.7 acre lot with frontage on Grove Street. That lot contains a lot of wetlands. He's not sure he can do much with it, but he just wanted to kind of get the two separated.
Right. Okay. And we have the correct amount of frontage on, obviously, the bigger, the bigger lot. Well, you're not building, yeah, you have, do you have enough frontage in the other one? Yeah, I see it over there, sorry.
Total frontage is 217 on some change.
Yeah. Okay. All right, well, I think that's pretty straightforward. Anyone on the board have any questions? All right, I make a motion that we approve the A and R for splitting up Sixth Causeway Street into two lots.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks for coming.
Okay, thank you.
Signing the Mylar, so Mr. Driscoll can take that with him and then there's some copies you'd also.
All right. We'll have a little break and we'll go sign those plans.
If you're Scott?
Yes.
Yeah, I work, Scott and I work together a long.
Today's date.
I've worked a long, long time.
All right. Number, okay, and that.
I don't see Renaldo, so if you want, Steve is here.
Yep. We're gonna jump over, actually, Renaldo is here, 'cause I saw him downstairs walking in, but that's fine. We can go to Steve, 'cause Steve is sitting here, so. All right, and I, the next item that we're gonna review is a waiver of site plan review approval request for Steve's rental. So, the rental company, which is Steve's, started up a couple months ago and part of their decision was that they were able to display equipment in the front of the building. To give you some history, I did talk to a couple of the former planning board members and one of the things on the, in the, down in that area is we're trying to, they had worked towards keeping it neater. So, that was when, when all of a sudden a flock of sheds appeared, there was some concern. So, we asked you to come in to do a waiver of site plan, just so we could understand what your thoughts were and we'll probably put some limits on the amount of, you know, sheds that appear. So, we'll try to keep it down to a, a small flock of sheds and not a large flock of sheds, so. So, if you could go ahead and.
Steve Ryder, 45 Irving Street, Millis. Steve's rental on 1370 Main Street, Millis. What we're looking to do is put the sheds on the property. Quite frankly, what we would like to do is, if you look at our property, there's an L-shaped on the left-hand side between Kangaroo and us. We wanna eventually have enough sheds that it's filling the edge of that perimeter in an L, so it'll be a park-like experience. You know, we want, you know, people don't want to buy sheds in a dump. So, we want a good-looking facility. I think we've already enhanced the facility. I cleaned up, there must have been a traffic accident at some point. We, we cleaned up the rearview mirror and found a mouse flying out of it as we, as we moved it. So, we, you know, we want a property that looks nice, presentable, and that's important to us.
All right, so on the, you gave us a couple of handouts here, which they, unfortunately, they can't see at home, but, so right now, I'm looking at your, I'm looking at the pictures. So, as I look at the plan view, so if I look at the plan view, what you're saying is to the left-hand side of it is where you were thinking.
If you're, if you're facing it from the street, yes, the left-hand side.
Is where you think you may be putting the, the sheds there.
Yeah.
So, I know they're temporary. Only thing I, you might, and I don't know if you've asked this, I, I don't know if it would be, you might have to check and see with the, it's a display. What would you think, Josh? I mean, it's, it's technically, it's.
So, are we talking about signage?
Well, no, no, I'm not worried, I'm not thinking of signage. I'm thinking, he's putting sheds there for sale. It doesn't count as putting a shed in, correct?
No.
No.
In a shed, it's not considered a, because it doesn't have footings and it doesn't have a foundation, it's not considered a.
Structure.
No, no, I'm just thinking.
So, it doesn't have, there's no issues with setback.
We don't have to worry about the building department.
No.
That's fine. No, I just think that if we go ahead and tell them it's great to go and then, then the building commissioner says, hey, guys.
Yeah, no.
We don't want to get, we don't want to get in trouble for that.
No, in fact, the building commissioner told me that my shed, when I put a shed on my property, I discussed it with him because of prior.
Go ahead, Ellen.
I believe there's a size limitation on that and I wanna say it's 200 square feet.
Yeah, there is for, yeah.
You're right, so for site plan approval, whenever you have a building that's, that's less than 200 square feet, that's when you have, that's when you qualify for, for a waiver request. I don't think any of these even remotely match. And then to Nicole's point, there, there's no foundations, so there's no actual building being erected, these are being sold. And I don't think it constitutes a display.
All right, and so on that one, just once again, trying to understand what, you know, we're gonna do, what would be the, you know, you're saying you want a line and what would your anticipation be for?
So, it's hard to say, because we're gonna have challenges at times, so we got a shed that was supposed to be delivered right to the customer. Well, they don't, you know, we tell people they gotta put down gravel and things like that underneath. Well, they're not ready, can, can you hold it for a couple weeks? You know, we don't want to be a warehouse. You're not gonna see five of the same shed on our property. They're not gonna be lined up. They're gonna, you know, they're gonna be in a nice L, looking nice, presentable, with your permission. What I'd like to do also on the right-hand side of the property on that grass is I'm trying to get a gazebo to put there. So, it's a, you know, I want to have a park-like experience. I want it to be presentable.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, that's fine, I got it. And the only other thing is, so it's back far enough from the, 'cause they didn't seem too close to the, the street, so that was pretty good. I mean, that, that sounds fine. So, limitation-wise, you can't give us a number, because it's not like you'll have a specific number.
Right. It's a, it's a very flexible and, you know.
We probably want to put a limit. So, we probably want to, you know, what would, what would be the maximum number of sheds you figure you'd have there?
Fifteen.
Okay, so, we'll say 20, just in case you get five backed up.
Okay, I appreciate that.
And.
We also, I think we should determine a setback from the sidewalk, because we don't.
There's no sidewalk.
Or from the street. I mean, you don't want to have the shed.
Right.
Do we want to have sheds that are coming all the way?
Yeah, well, how far back are them, how far back are you now?
I think we're probably 10 feet.
10 feet. Okay, so it is, what do you guys think on that?
Yeah, I get an equivalent point. You don't want them, you don't want, and I'm sure it wouldn't, but we just want to make sure it doesn't look like a, like a yard sale where you go by and just see them right on the side. So, I'm just trying to get a lay for how far back this actually goes.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Where is the actual town-owned land coming off the street? Well, I'm.
No, 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 I'm just trying to think. Usually, the town owns 10 feet. So, I mean, usually, remember, the layout of the street depends on what it is. That's like a, whatever highway it is, I think they go 40 to 50 feet wide. So, he's probably beyond the town setback and they're not permanent anyhow. And, you know, the, he wants it back far enough that the, when the, when the plows go through in the winter, they don't get, they don't get nailed with snow.
Mr. Chair, if I may ask, Steve, I'm looking here, so the building, the front, how, how, would it be parallel to the front portion of the building? How far in front are we talking about approximately?
I don't understand your question.
So, if you look at the building on the map?
Yep.
You can see the front that faces main.
Right.
When you're erecting or putting up these sheds, are they parallel to the front or are they closer?
So, I'm trying, right now, I don't know if you can see it there, we've got an arc like this.
Yep.
Which is probably from the parking spaces back, back 20 feet. I think we go to about the corner of the building and then curl out towards the street. Ultimately, what I would like to do is be down all the way almost to Kangaroo, where there's, we've got a line of shrubbery on the edge of their parking lot, down, and then, it's hard with the picture, but then it, to a right angle towards our building, there's a small stretch and to fill that in.
I think I see what you're saying.
And the only other thing on that is that, just as a public safety thing, you know, from Kangaroo, that you're not blocking any sidewalks or anything.
No, no.
So, okay. The only other thing is, I mean, so that sounds fine to me, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, but you, it, we have to be careful of the additional advertising. So, I saw the sign that had, you know, sheds for sale. I get it, I mean, that's probably within, you know, your rights on that, but, you know, big banners.
We're not, we're not putting up big banners or, you know, small things.
Right, good.
You know, real, realtor sign, size.
Yeah, no, that's fine, it's just, we, we.
Election size.
We try to enforce the sign across the board, so it's, you know, we just want to be fair to everybody. All right, go ahead.
Additional comment?
Yep.
First of all, I've heard great things about you.
Thank you.
People seem very happy. Just a comment, the original approval was to display no more than four pieces of equipment. I think, from my own perspective, I envision much of a bigger piece of equipment than you're displaying, so I don't think the eight to 10, I'm seeing on there regularly it's much of a problem.
Okay.
Just be aware of the actual approval was only for four pieces.
Would it be, I mean, most of our equipment is smaller.
Right.
Is it possible to get that changed?
Yeah, no, I, I don't know, can we change it?
You have to offer modification.
Right, yep.
Yeah, you don't want to do that.
Okay.
We'll just, we'll just stay, yeah.
We don't have any complaints.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So, that's.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, if, I was thinking Bobcat and, you know, mini excavator would be, was what I was, I'm sure, yeah. So, if you get little stuff, I don't think that. The, the intent of what we were trying to do was make sure, same thing, it didn't end up jam-packed full of stuff.
Yep.
All right, so, I think, can we, so, I, I think we, the thought process is no more than 20 sheds. It's gonna be at least, what, 10 feet back, at least 10? Want a little further?
I just, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to create a look of like row houses or something. I just, I mean, it's, I don't.
If we're talking about the space there that's being occupied, that corner that he's talking about, that, then I'm fine with that. I just don't want it, to Nicole's point.
I want to make sure, because right on the other side of, of the sheds is the Kangaroo driveway and I don't want to, not having, I've never pulled out of there, so I don't know what the sightline is, so I don't know, is 10 feet gonna be sufficient to?
We do, we did 15. And then one, one more question, which actually just brought up, Nicole, we're gonna ask you 100 questions. Nicole brought up a, a question. You did ask, you did talk to Kangaroo?
I haven't talked to them. They, they haven't come over and, you know, their car's pulling in and out every day and nobody's come and seemed to be concerned by it.
All right, it's just, you know, we, that'd be something you'd have to deal with anyhow.
Yeah, I think a 15-foot, because there's no, if I recall, there's no brush there.
No, it's a pretty clean sightline.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that there's no, we're not creating any sort of obstruction in pulling out from either, from either parking space, from Seaze or from Kangaroo.
Okay, makes sense.
So.
Go ahead, George.
On your picture here, your, where your mailboxes, that's obviously the entrance.
Yes, that's one of the entrances.
Okay, so there's, I see four trees. You have no plans to cut those down, I assume?
Oh, no.
So, are you, so.
One of them needs a little trimming, 'cause it's got some dead limbs, but.
Yeah, but are you coming beyond those trees towards the street or are you coming up to those trees?
We're gonna be behind those trees. If you look behind those trees, you'll actually see where the brush line starts.
Okay.
So, that, that's, you know, that's ideally, when we get inventory, that's where I want it to be and, you know, so you're gonna see a nice, large stretch of, hopefully, semi-green lawn, depends upon irrigation from the mother nature, but.
Okay, so you're, you're gonna have like one of everything, not five of everything?
Right, yeah, no, we.
Okay, how many styles do you have?
There's three styles, but then you have variations where they want doors and where they want windows and things like that.
Okay. So, these trees look like they're, one of these trees, I guess the closest one, it looks like it's about 20 feet from the street, approximately. I'm looking at the bottom left picture.
Okay.
That looks about 20 feet from the curb. Is that your driveway or is that the street?
That is our driveway.
Okay. So, but the one with the mailbox is the actual 109.
Okay, I'm sorry. The, the one with the mailbox on the left is 109, to the right is our driveway.
Okay.
And then, to the bottom picture, there's a similar, I didn't want to step out in the road and get hit, but similar view. I got the, the darker pictures are from Google Earth or Google Maps.
So, those will all be with inside, so that's basically 20 feet from the street?
I would say so.
Approximately, okay. Well, if you mess us up, we can always yell at him.
All right.
We don't want to yell at him.
Yeah, no, I don't want to be.
Talk sternly.
All right, so, just to recap, so, 15 feet back.
Maximum 20.
20, yeah, 20 sheds and, and no large, no large signs, so. Okay, I make, I make a motion that we approve, grant a site waiver for 20 sheds, 15 feet back with no large banners to Steve's rental.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
I'll get him then.
Okay, thank you. All righty. Next on the agenda, we have Rivendell Woods subdivision bond amount estimate agreement on 227 Causeway Street. All right. So, could you let us, the folks know who you are and what you're here to do?
Okay, so, my name is Renaldo. I'm representing the project for Rivendell Woods, 227 Causeway Street. It's the subdivision and I'm here for the bond estimate. And if I could, I'd like to ask the board a couple questions.
Okay, yeah, go ahead. Yeah, sure.
So, we do have from the original project, I mentioned to, and Camille being very helpful for, for me from the beginning, thank you so much, Camille. And for, I took this project was kind of like a pretty much approval and after I get this, I wasn't on the beginning of the whole approvals for the project. And as we're doing the project, we have the plan. And the plan for the approvals, they have a fence, chain link fence all the way around. And I'd like to see if the board concerned to, we can be finished the plan as not having the four-foot fence.
Okay. So, with that, so, what he would like to do is, in the approval, they had a four-foot chain link fence around the retaining basin, so it's not really, you know, it's, it's very shallow. And he wanted to see if we could get rid of that. So, one of the other things that was on the approval was the screening trees. So, those went in and the, our intent when we did the, when we approved the subdivision was that the screening trees were to be of a decent size and they were to screen the house right next door. So, I drove over there the other day.
Sure.
And the trees that are there are wholly inadequate for screening. So, what you, what I'm suggesting would be an option to the board for our, for your review, is I, I would say that I'm fine with omitting the chain link fence. There was a value on that of like, of a decent amount.
Yeah, 30 grand.
Yeah. So, what I would, what I suggest is that in that hole where the, where the, you can see the white house right next door, you put in larger trees to work as a screening and that would make up for the other trees that are a bit small. That way, there's no net cost to you. And it would do, what we intended to do at the beginning is to screen off the retention pond from the next-door neighbor. What does the board think of that?
So, like size-wise, you, because that one we went, we went five-foot ones. Do you guys have any requires?
Yeah, those are, those are five feet.
Yes, I know.
Well, they, they may be five feet technically in height. The, the screening tree that I would anticipate we would have would be bushier, a lot higher. So, you'd start off at five. I'm not looking for like 16-foot trees, but those are not, in my mind, those are not 15-foot trees. So, you know, I would say, I think, how many trees did you have to put in altogether?
17.
17? So, I would say, you know, I'm thinking, did you guys, George, you went down to take a look at it, too?
Yeah, I mean, they look like bushes.
Right. And are those, the deer out there, do you know are those deer-resistant?
No.
Okay, so, so, two things. So, in order to do any of this, you needed to put in a waiver for the fence, which Camille had contacted you earlier.
Yeah.
In writing, 'cause we can't do anything.
No, definitely.
Yeah, unless it's in writing.
And as right now for the bond, I have the full, the full amount.
Right, you left the full amount in, right.
Yeah, full amount.
And so, we could, we could bring that up next meeting to, to basically back that out. And then, you know, I, I would say, there are some pitches in there. You know, I would say, what do you think, George? 10 decent-sized trees to kind of screen that thing off?
Yeah, fast-growing ones.
And deer-resistant.
Is this what we're talking about?
Yeah, but if you, yeah, if you stand right here, it's wide open. I took a picture of it and I left it, yeah.
No, that's my question, so these would be screening trees?
Those are the screening trees, yeah.
Yeah, those are, those are, those would be 15-foot trees in about 15 years.
Yeah. So, what does the board think?
Well, there, there's also a line crossed out here of arborvitae's.
No, that, that's from Melissa. So, this, this here is basically, this is a reduction, is what he came in for. So, they put down the binder and the asphalt's down, that's taken care of, so that's taken off. They've actually loomed the swales, that's why that's off. They've put the riprap in, they have the flared end section, they have the special catch basin and they, she, yeah, she crossed off the five-to-six-foot arborvitae's, but then Melissa saw the pictures and actually made a sight trip herself, 'cause she thought it was a bit less than what we would have expected.
You'd want to add those back in, 'cause that's what she has here on this letter. She had this amount that if those trees were found, not to be acceptable. So, I would say on this bond, you'd, we'd want to put back in those.
We can't, we can't change the bond amount. He did take out the fats, okay? So, what we can do is, we can approve the amount of 163,200.
Even though that's, her recommendation here is, on this letter, is increase to 168,900 if screening trees are found not acceptable.
I think, okay, yeah, and I think that's.
So, that's what I'm saying.
What it's, right.
The difference between 168 and 163 are the 17 trees.
Okay.
So, I think what she's saying is put, is if.
Right, but what I'm saying is, which is great, what I'm saying is, if we're going to allow him not to do the fence, the fence was, and I have fences in here somewhere, that was, I know I had an email that said it. Do you remember how much it was, Camille? It was a lot.
32,256 for the 48-inch chain link fence.
Yeah.
Two hundred and ninety-four for the post.
Right, so that's, that right there is a decent amount of money if we, if we omit that. Go ahead.
The fence, I know Melissa sent an email saying that we need to double-check whether or not it was a requirement via the permit. Do we know?
It wasn't.
It wasn't?
It wasn't. They, the original developer put it in.
Oh, okay.
And so, we didn't change it. They put it in, the original, the original plan that you inherited had a fence around it. We're like, okay, if you wanna put a fence up, great.
But not condition.
We don't necessarily need it, and like I said, it's a, it's a shallow, it's a shallow basin, so...
And basically, the, the retention pond, the way, the type, uh, material we have...
It's all sand.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's never gonna have water there, so it's basically, it's just...
Right, yeah, it's, it's, they, they, I saw the test pits, it's, yeah, beautiful sand, yeah. I've driven by it. It's really nice sand, so... So what do you think of, uh, we can leave the amount the way it was, we can have him put in a, um, a request to not put in the chain link fence and ask for an additional ten trees. You know, I would say, at least, you know, arborvitae's, seven or eight feet. I mean, they're gonna be, you know, some of that thirty-two thousand dollars you're gonna spend on some decent-sized trees. Just in that area, you know, so I think that would be fair. You'll, you'll end up coming out ahead, because you won't have to put the whole fence in, and the neighbor will end up with a appropriate screen, and I think everyone wins. Does that sound fair enough? And we could just leave the, we could leave the bond amount as one sixty-three, but can we make it with a condition that, um, that the, the, that condition? The chain ring fence?
I can't say... I don't know, I mean, because the bond amount goes in that security document, so I don't know if Melissa has to update her estimate. I mean, you guys can...
No, no, we can leave the, yeah, we can leave the, we can just leave this as it is, and...
But the waiver of the chain link fence has to be done?
He has to say, he has to give us a waiver, right, in writing, a waiver of the chain link fence. And we would, and with that, we would have to approve it.
You'll have to come back next month.
Correct, yeah, okay.
And if I can, I was gonna ask you just one more question.
Yeah.
I was talking to the original guy, did, Ed Drisco, did this plan, original plan. And we have, I know I have to come back to you guys, because from the original plan, I don't know if you can see this plan here, we have the barn, the barn lot.
Yeah.
And he's, uh, ready to be filed for, because after we have the road being done, uh, he's ready to be filed. And he, I told him was, I was coming to, uh, for the bond, and he said, like, if you can please ask the board which way he, you guys like to see the barn lot to be filed, as a simple as a A and R lot? Because it's a land court lot?
Okay, so you're gonna knock the barn down?
We have that one as a, uh, approval with the historic already.
Okay, all right, so when you get, um, you, you, you have to submit it whatever way you wanna do it. It's your, it's your property, you can do anything you want. If it's an A and R, we really don't have a choice on it.
But the reason we were saying, because the planning board had to see, because, uh, as we have in the new road, because the way he was explaining for me, uh, when the original plan was approval, he said, like, after we got the road in, that's when the, the other lot for the, the barn lot was gonna be filed for the building lot.
Well, I, I think there was, on this whole property, there was a plan that started many years ago, and the story has changed many times.
Okay, so I'm just, and I'm gonna deal with this.
And I could tell you that we have been told, we have been told a couple of, of interesting tales. So, what I would say is present something in writing.
Not that we're putting that on you.
Not on you, but I'm just saying, so far, so far, what I would say is put it in writing, have your engineer send it to us, and then we could take a look at it. But until then, um, you know, like I said, the history of this, the history of this has been, has been interesting, so... All right, so I make a motion that we approve the reduction in the bond amount to one sixty-three two hundred. And that was the check that you had, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, and for, for you, if you could, next time, so if you could file the waiver for the removal of the fence. And then, um, you know, part of our, what we would, we were to prove that, we would like, you know, eight, ten, you know, decent-sized trees, so we can, like I said, I wanna be fair to everybody, so... All right, good.
Thank you.
All right, good, thanks again, appreciate it.
Um, I'm sorry, look, do you have the, um, the form filled out? The test case, if you're ready to sign it?
Sure. Yeah.
Oh, wait, oh, so you have a, is it, and what about the recording information? All this information has to be filmed out. You know what to do, why don't I just keep the signature page, you guys can sign the signature say, signature page?
Signature page.
And I'll hang on to it.
Okay.
And then we get the rest of the information.
We can do that, that's fine.
Is that okay?
Okay.
Oh, did you say you had a copy?
No, I have an extra one.
Oh, an extra one. Why don't you take this one and just, because I think you might have to go on the registered record.
Okey-dokey.
Yep.
Our next meeting is, um, July...
Eighteenth.
Nineteenth.
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 So if you wanna get that waiver to me, I can send you that.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, draft, okay, um...
So we're back, we are doing seventeen trees.
Oh, the, so he's hit, he has the seventeen trees in already. He's going to add ten real trees. Because the other trees, I don't really care, you know, the other trees eventually will, if we live long enough, will grow up to be trees.
Those bushes?
Yes, they will grow up to be tree, well, they'll, they will, they will grow. It's wide open, so they will grow pretty, as long as they get wet enough. Go ahead, Scott.
Scott, P U Z four eleven Union. I don't know if there's been any updates, like, on any town projects or what's going on with Herman Schuh, GAF. Seems like those properties have been sitting there for quite a while. I don't know if there's issues with the land, or...
Yeah, well, on that...
It seemed like they were, they were ready to roll for a while there, and then now it's been dormant.
You're getting ahead of yourself, Scott. I have the, I have the quick end of the, uh, end of the meeting thing that I can update you. Herman Schuh was still sitting there, because of the, uh, the forever chemicals that they had there. So that, that's still on hold. And, uh, they, they just had a meeting on the one up on, um, Larch Street on 109. So that one that they've already cut the trees down, they're gonna proceed on that property. That did not go through the planning board, because it was a, it was a... Forty B. But that is, they just had the pre-construction meeting, and the, we reached out to the Beta and, uh, and the police chief, and suggested that they did not interfere with the traffic on 109 between the hours of nine and three. And so, they agreed that that made sense, uh, because it would've been a nightmare for everybody who went through Millis if they had done that. So, they, the, any of the work that's done on 109 will be from nine to, nine to three o'clock. So it'll be after the commute and before the commute, so, should hopefully be. What else? The, um, the one over on, um, on Ridge Street. Dover Road, nothing's happened on that, I haven't heard anything. And the one on Ridge Street, uh, they just got in, uh, a delivery of pipe, which they were waiting for. They had a supply chain issue, so they couldn't get the water mains. They just got a delivery of pipe, so they'll be able to finally put the water mains in, and they'll be able to actually start doing something over there. But they were, they were on hold because they couldn't get pipe for, like, many months, so...
Well, thank you, sorry I got ahead of myself.
Yeah, don't worry about it. The next item on our agenda is a, uh, a, uh, flow chart, our, uh, of what you need to do to get a permit in the town of Millis. So, um, what ended up happening was, somebody would go to pull a permit, and they would call Camille. And then they'd call the town administrator's executive assistant, and they would call the building department. So, uh, we had Beta put together, or Beta volunteered to put together a flow chart of, you know, what you need to do to pull a permit. And, uh, we looked at it, we sent it to the building commissioner, and we reworked it a couple of times. I'd like you guys to take a peek at it. I think it, I think it's pretty comprehensive. You know, they, they listed the items that would need a, you know, that in general would need a, you know, planning board review, zoning board and appeals review, and, like I said, it's, it's pretty comprehensive. It has, you know, warnings that you shouldn't cut down all the trees before you go and ask for a permit, because that wouldn't be good. And has the phone numbers for everyone to call. So, uh, if you guys could take a look at it and give us some feedback of if there's anything that, you know, we should adjust or change or we missed, that would be great.
Are we talking about this now, or are we...
No, we could take a look at it, because this is, I wanna go home.
All righty then. Okay, I'm glad I took my, I'm glad I wrote down all my notes for tonight.
Oh, you did, oh, you have notes?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, well, no, we can talk about it now.
This was sent out to us, so I reviewed it.
I know, no, no, let's, we can talk about it now, that's fine.
I just had a couple of comments. One, with regards to the special permits, there were, there are three items in the book that are not listed here. Plan business development, plan in, uh, industrial development, and land clearing. I know there is this note here, no cutting work, but that actually falls as under special permit is, is land clearing. So, I was just wondering why those three weren't listed in here?
I think she was just trying to do like the most requested, because the whole use table, there's so many different special permits.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I was just going by this list, so she went by everything, there were just a couple, those couple things that from, that from, that have, that are specifically listed.
So there's only a couple that are missing?
There's, there's only three that are listed. Plan business development, which is subsection D, planned industrial development, which is subsection E, and land clearing, which is subsection K, so...
Yeah, we'll have to add those in.
And then, my other suggestion was, because all of these items each have their own subsection under section thirteen, that, this is just a, a suggestion, you know, to be discussed, whether it would be beneficial to indicate, because most of these fall under section thirteen, some of them fall under section twelve or fourteen, to indicate the actual, the actual section and/or subsection. So, for example, when you have here, special permit, application, personal wireless communication facilities, that's section thirteen, subsection S, so...
So, on this, you know, this, good, good idea, the whole, this is what I, what my thought was to them was, permits for dummies. And so, it would be great to have that, the thing is, if we make it, you know, the three that we're missing is a no-brainer, we should add those in. I think if we make it too complicated, um, you know, we want it to be, they look at it and they go, oh, well, this is one of the things I have to do. They're gonna have to do the work. I'm not, we're not gonna give them everything. Because initially, when I looked at it, I said, hey, maybe we should do it with the ones that are like most commonly done. And then I'm like, you know what, if you're gonna pull a permit, you get to do a little bit of work. I mean, that's my personal opinion. So, I, I think we try to keep it clean and simple, and then, you know, they can look up the stuff. That's my thought.
Okay, I just thought if, if you've got these boxes anyways, you're not necessarily add, doing, changing the layout if you just have...
It's pretty big, so old people can read it.
Well, you gotta print this big for somebody, for me to read it. I mean, I gotta get, you know, that was just...
What does the board think? Uh, you know, is, do we wanna, is it...
I understand not doing the work for people.
Right.
But I also understand there are, for example, the town of Medway has a whole booklet that they hand out to people with this flow chart, step by step, and referencing all of that.
They must have more money than Millis.
Well, again, if we, that's beside the point.
If we could get the grants, yes.
If we could get the grants, but if we're doing something like this, we're trying to make it user-friendly to encourage people to come, so I'm not saying, give them, just to me, the idea of putting in a subsection that just says, you know, spec, planning board, special permit, you reference up here, section thirteen, and then, whereas wireless communication is subsection N, and substance abuse facility is subsection T, and you're just doing the little symbol in T, you know, that was just a comment, so...
What do you guys think?
That's, that's lawyer brain to a T, because I almost have the exact same thing. What you do, right, you'd have like C-section blank, or just like our little appendices.
Yeah.
That said, I, I lean a little bit more with Rich, in that I think when you're talking about something like this, a table chart, less convoluted probably the better. If we want a separate document that kind of, you know, hits more pertinent sections that you would need to know, then we could always list that. That being said, you could find just about anything you want on our Millis government website, as much work as the website needs. You can still locate quite a few of the sections. So if I type in Millis plus land clearing, you will see our bylaws listed. So, I think here you just wanna make it as comprehensive and simple for people to understand, okay, site plan review, if I'm doing this, I'm gonna need site plan review. And, and again, I guess I wouldn't, I don't know what it would look like on a grand scale, but looking at this, and I have great eyesight, it's already kind of hard, hard to see, so if you add little appendices or notations or references, it might be making more difficult.
Well, could, we could...
The other thing is this is...
You insist that it's one page?
Yeah, we gotta make it one page. It's, it's, you know, usually, I mean, I, I go to the building department a lot, and, you know, we get like three pages, and then that's, you know, we're, we're not very smart, as construction guys, so you're gonna make it real simple, so... But, um, the other thing is, this isn't cast in stone. I mean, this is, this is us, the planning board, giving this out to all departments to help out the process. If we say, hey, Nicole was a hundred percent right, actually, we should put more detail in, we can modify it, it's no big deal. We just wanted to start a point.
Yeah, those were just, those, I mean, you know, I was also looking at these items, and there's no particular order. Do we alphabetize them, just, but I figured that you'd like really jump on me if I said it. We arrange them so they're in alphabetical order.
I already, I already thought about it by going by the ones that were more commonly picked, and then I, I kinda dialed myself back, and I'm like, let's not get too into the weeds on it, so, because then you'd have to really think about it too much, so...
Mike Jamp, if you don't mind, Mike Jamp Tito actually suggested possibly also even just putting a line saying the first step is to consult his zoning bylaw books.
And maybe even link, if we can, to the bylaws.
Right, I mean, put the link, it's on the plan, they're on the planning board's webpage, that's the most, you know, I have the current zoning bylaws. And the first line should, you know, because I thought the same thing, because, you know, people, a lot of information you can get right there.
Yeah, we should put that on there.
Right.
Cool, that, if you guys already have the numbers down there, the contact info, maybe we should put above that, you know, all, all items are...
Yep, on this link, you know, for zoning bylaws, yep.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good. See, this is actually all self-serving for Camille. She's behind the whole thing, because she won't have to pick up the...
You think this is gonna stop her falling?
No, like I said, I, I would've get this, I'd make notes on the backside, then I'd lose it, so... All right.
I'm not gonna...
Does anyone else have any comments on the, uh, on the flow chart? And if you do, after, if you don't have any now, if you wanna circle back, you know, it's, we're, once we get it good enough together, we'll have them printed, and like Camille said, she was thinking we'd give them to, you know, all the boards to...
And I'll post it on the website.
Post it on the website, to hand out for, help people further down the road.
If you want, we can put on the agenda for July and have a final copy, and if you like it. Like I said, this is something we can change, edit, you know, whenever.
Do you guys wanna take one more crack at it in July, or? I'm pretty good on, I mean, I'm good at adding the link on it, I think we're good at adding the three things that, go ahead.
On, we're, the notes, and they're in red. I think those should be emphasized, because we, you know, if I get anything else, people do things and they, they forget that, oh, I don't have the permit, but I'll just go in and cut a tree, or I'll start digging, or...
So move it up higher?
Make it larger, and, and emphasize the fact that nothing can be done without a permit, period.
We can put that up at the top. Go ahead.
Because some things are permitted by, I mean, no, I suppose, I don't know, we'd have to ask Melissa if that can be a larger print, I don't know if she's limited to.
We could move it, we could move it up at the top, the first thing on the top, above what permits your project needs, we could put a note that, on the very top, no cutting work, as prior additions have all required permits.
I mean, we've had issues for years where people just go and start doing stuff, oh, yeah, I need a permit for this, you know, and, and they come in, oh, yeah, I'm sorry I did that. Well, now you got to put it back. Perfect example, I had an issue in Fox owns the land now, but when the previous owner owned it, he decided to put a road in and brought asphalt in from another project and started building a road. You can't do that without a permit. He was doing it. Fortunately, it got to the point where they, they ended up tearing it all back out again, so it cost them a small fortune. So this is, this is my point with this. And no offense against developers, builders, contractors, whatever, but it is a game, and if you can get away with it, why not?
Okay, so we'll move that up, so why don't we, why don't we reconfigure it, and we'll look at it in July?
Okay.
Or, I mean, there's actually, we don't have to approve it.
Oh, I mean.
So we could email it, and if everyone says okay, then we'll go ahead and do it. Why don't we do that, rather than to circle back again?
I'll email you the three.
Yep.
That were listed on that page.
And I'll gather everything together and send it off to Melissa in one email.
Kennedy, can the lettering be made larger for us older folks?
You can print it in tabloid size, George, because that's what I did to read it. The sheets are like this big.
Oh, yeah.
I use a lot of.
You just have to go out and buy those sheets and buy a printer that will fit.
And you have to buy a lot of ink. All right, so, let's see, approval of the minutes from May tenth, twenty twenty. So I make a motion that we approve the minutes from May tenth, twenty twenty, as written.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So we had a pending, which was thirteen-seventy-five Main Street Parking Lot Canopy Solar Project, review of as-built plans, that is on hold due to the issue with the property, the building violations, which is also the one for the other reversal wellness. That was on hold. All right, and we've, go ahead.
I just wanted to update the board that with regards to your request regarding the definitive subdivision regulation, Bob Weiss said there is a chance that there's a community planning event for housing choice communities, which we are, would be available. He's going to look into that to see if we can get state funding to assist us in updating and overhauling our subdivision regulations.
Cool.
So we are looking into that.
Good, great. All right, unless there's anything else, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Go ahead.